And we have a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, pursuant to one MRSA 4056F as Philbrook Fund trustees.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. If you guys can sign this one, that would be, I'll just pass it around.
We need to act on it.
You need to act on it.
We need to act on this first. I move that we accept the amount of three thousand five hundred.
No, three thousand fifty.
Three thousand fifty for two zero two three six. B.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now you're all seated.
Thanks Karen and yes, thank you again.
Sure. You want that paper, right?
Yeah, I do.
The signed paper. Don't be sorry about it.
I was out sick and I was like, oh yeah, Thursday has to be. I had them all photocopied and ready and waiting for Thursday to put them in your boxes and I was sick. Tanya's like, I'll do it.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That reminds me of somebody and I can't place exactly who.
Is that yours?
Nope.
Is that yours? Somebody have something on?
Didn't come off my desk, but it's something we're going to be talking about, I think.
Oh, all of the maintenance.
I don't need a truck driver. Thank you guys.
I do sometimes.
Okay, well recess until 6:00 PM.
Oh golly, that's forty-five minutes. Why don't you go bring those donuts in from the other room?
Say again?
You said cocoa?
Have the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got a few guests with us tonight. Make sure you sign, sign in on the table back there. You usually have a little sign-in sheet so we can make sure everybody's accounted for on our minutes for next, next meeting. Okay, we have a special town meeting this evening. And let's start with that. Okay.
Can I make a nomination for moderator, Mr. Chairman?
Would you please?
Yes, I nominate Paul Smelter to be the moderator of this special town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All in favor? All opposed?
You're supposed to.
Motion carried. Okay, each of us should have a ballot slip. Go ahead and fill that out. There you go, sir. All right.
Does Peg count them?
Suspense is killing me.
The vote is complete. Congratulations, Paul. You're the moderator for this evening.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. We have one article to vote on tonight. Warrant Article Number Two. Shall the town vote to fix the thirteenth day of November 2022 and the fifteenth day of May 2023, when all 2023 taxes shall be due and payable in semi-annual installments, and to instruct the tax collector to charge interest at four percent per annum on all taxes unpaid after said dates. This article extends the due date to November 30th, 2022, from November 15th, 2022, to give the residents more time to make their first payment due to the delay mailing of tax bills.
Is there a motion?
I'd move that, that article.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Peg, has everyone in the room been cleared?
I believe so, except for Nancy. Would you like to vote? Okay, good. Absolutely, I'm sorry for the delay.
Paul, if no one's requesting it, we don't need to vote by ballot. We can just.
We do not need to vote by ballot. Raise our hands.
Yeah.
That's why I had to make sure everybody was cleared.
Paul, do you want these out or do you don't need them?
No, not if you, it's a small enough crowd. As long as you can verify that everyone's been checked.
I have.
All right, any discussion, any questions on the art, on the warrant? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote on warrant Article Two. All those in favor, please signify by raising of your hands. Thank you. Those opposed? Article Two passes. I'll now accept a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning the town meeting, please signify by raising your hands. Thank you. Those opposed? The special town meeting is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation by Harbor Mitchell. I met with him last week and we had a wonderful discussion at Moody's about something that's going on in Walderboro that, you know, you really can't, part of our job is to look forward and you really can't tell where you're going unless you know where you've been. Harbor may have some, some ways to fill that in. Sir, how are you?
Deafard Nastone, please forgive me. I can't hear a thing tonight. I have no hearing in my left ear and my right ear is mostly gone. So what I'd like to do is just kind of read through it. Jan, did you give them a copy of my draft at all?
No, I did not.
You didn't, okay. Well, I'll pass, I'll, I'll use it and then I'll just give you a copy. I really don't have a presentation as such. I really am just here to meet and greet, put faces to names, things like that, because I don't have anything to offer the town of Walderboro at this point in my life, down the road perhaps. But there's two things I want you to take away tonight from what I have to say. The first one is that the town of Walderboro from above the head of Todd to its southern border along the Madomic River has an extraordinary archaeological resource that at least dates to the Revolutionary War period and back as far as at least seventeen forty, seventeen thirties. It may actually date back even earlier than that, based on some of the work that I've done. I don't know of another one like it. In part because most towns on the midcoast develop in situ. So they build on top of themselves. So everything that came before is gone. That's not what Walderboro did. Walderboro started several miles downstream in the seventeen thirties as the town of Leverett. Then it moved upstream slightly above Sampson Cove and became the town of Broad Bay. Then it went downtown. Once it moved up to the head of Todd, everything from there down along the river just became pasture. For the most part. It's all still there. All the homes, all the farms, all the mills, all the fortifications, everything. The cemeteries, the churches. There were three churches by seventeen seventy-two, all Lutheran. It still exists and it is essentially undisturbed, other than natural forces. Cows, sheep, plowing, things like that. The second thing I'd like you to take away tonight is that archaeology as a science, when it becomes a public awareness, can have an extraordinary impact, emotional, historic, and I don't want to overstate the economic, but it can have an economic impact as well. When it comes into an area, individuals who do archaeology for a living or in research, if they're from outside the area, they have to stay somewhere. Hotels, motels. Hot summer day, they're on their way home, the Narrows Tavern looks pretty good. When they break a shovel, store a lumber. True value, they have to replace it. All of those things add up economically. What I would like to do in the very long term is to work privately, not necessarily led by the municipality or led by historical society or led by some other agency, but as a corporate body, establish a table of some kind in which we can have a conversation between a number of interested parties. Private citizens, municipality, historical societies. There are foundations out there. The Moravian Church was built here in seventeen sixty-two. The only Moravian Church north of Boston. The Moravians all moved in seventeen seventy to North Carolina. And Broad Bay County still exists in North Carolina today. The Moravians still exist. They have an enormous archaeological and educational facility in the Winston-Salem area. They would be an interested party. Their church site still exists here somewhere. I haven't found it yet, but I've looked. For those of you familiar with University of Maine in Orina, the Vogler Library is actually a Vogler, seventeen forty-two, Walderboro. The impact of Walderboro's history goes way beyond Walderboro. And to know that is to help us understand who we are. And a town that knows who they are becomes a town that knows maybe where they're going. Or at least they know where they come from. And so archaeology by itself may not be a panacea, but it's an anchor. It helps people understand the tangible identity that they've had for three hundred years. So those are the two things that I want you to take away tonight. A little background. I have thirty years in the field, worked with the state, worked with universities. I started doing independent work probably twenty-five, thirty years ago, in between trying to make a living. The last piece of work that I did on a historic site, which means since writing was introduced into a region, prior to that is what we call prehistoric. The last effort I did in the midcoast was several years ago in Lincolnville, was on Philip Olmer's home. I've been doing work here for the last several years, but that was the last one I did in Lincolnville. I didn't know who Philip Olmer was, other than the fact that it was important to Lincolnville and the Historical Society. But he was born here, Christmas seventeen fifty-one. He was George Washington's German interpreter during the revolution. Nobody knows that. Would that make a difference in somebody's life, knowing that Walderboro did that? It might. Archaeology adds to the flavor of a town and the flavor of a community. I don't know where this will end up, five years, ten years, fifty years from now. But you have an opportunity as a community, not just a municipality with a governing body, but as a citizenry, to think about who you are in a way that just doesn't often come along, if ever. Williamsburg, right, that might be one. I can't think of another entire community that has hundreds, and I do mean hundreds, of intact archaeological sites. If you were to take and walk the river on every single lot from above Dunkin' Donuts all the way to the southern border, every single lot had a colonial site on it. Most of them are still there. That's extraordinary. I don't know how that will manifest with the table and a community of people at that table, but that's what I'd like to do. Walderboro's not my town. I'm not a citizen of Walderboro. I just think life has a lot to offer in a lot of different ways and I'd like to contribute. Questions? And Paul, you can be my interpreter or something.
Do you know David Reed?
Do you know David Reed?
No, I know some weeds, but I don't think I know him.
Reed, David Reed, you guys know who David Reed is. He, he's told me a lot of stuff, like with, down to Thomas's Hill. That was originally supposedly one of the spots that Walderboro started.
He knows about Thomas's Hill.
Thomas's Hill.
Yeah, which you're familiar with.
Right.
Yeah.
He knows a lot of history.
Oh yeah.
Of Walderboro.
Well, see, that would be the kind of individual that might be very helpful. Now, there would be a need for, say, a liaison from the board, if for no other reason, because they know how municipalities work. And sometimes private citizens don't get that. So to, to interface with different realities around the community, you'd have to have that kind of person.
Yeah, I've had him.
Yeah.
Meet with the University of Maine and do stuff like that in the past. He's gotten told all kinds of history of Walderboro.
It's a very different kind of context, given that it's not necessarily on any public property. It's on private property. And so part of this whole process in the long term is going to be about education and awareness. You know, not, not digging, not getting on private land, but just building awareness. Yeah. And I haven't fleshed out that whole vision yet, believe me. It's, it's a lot bigger than me.
Going back in history, like Bill and I, the coin that they're putting out is a relative of ours that was started here.
Conrad Hyer.
Yes.
Is on the commemorative coin.
Yes.
That the town will have for its two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary.
Isn't that wonderful?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He was one of my relatives.
Bill. Bill and Abden are his descendants.
Oh, is that right? Yeah. I, I was in the woods a couple of years ago along the river and I stumbled on a storer cemetery or a storer grave. She was six years old, seventeen seventy-four. It's completely destroyed, overgrown. Some people might know it's there. It's really easy to lose touch really quickly. So things like Conrad Hyer, that name might not mean a lot to a lot of people. So education and awareness makes that more relevant and that's part of what I want to do. Make that all more relevant and let the citizens decide what they want to do about it.
Yeah, that's cool.
How are you? Questions?
Could you talk a little bit about the DeBarrs map?
Yes, I can. Why don't you, Abden, yes, if you want to pass that along, you look at the, I think the last page might have the DeBarrs map. In, in seventeen, there you go, in seventeen seventy or thereabouts, a man named Joseph Frederick Walley DeBarrs, Canadian, did a survey for the, for the Crown, for England. He surveyed the entire coast of Maine. He also did Nova Scotia and Labrador with a bunch of other surveyors. On the right, you'll see the Madomic River. That's his map. And I think you'll see a lot of little black dots all along the river. Those are structures. He identified every single structure he saw upwards of, would you say half mile from shore?
You said a mile. You, you said, when you, when we talked about it, you said a mile back. They were told to go back a mile.
At least to two-twenty.
If they could.
The lots went a mile back, but he, he surveyed at least back to about where Route two-twenty is and where Route thirty-two is. And he identified every single structure he saw. And my job for the last year or two has been to find a couple of them in order to prove that that map is accurate. And I have. The, the structures on that map that I've found are within fifty or a hundred feet of where they, they show on the map, when you overlay modern topographic maps. The DeBarrs map is an incredible resource. I would identify that it's also very sensitive because it identifies where people can go and loot, right? And we don't want that. But ultimately, it's public property, it's Library of Congress. And if you, if you look carefully, you'll see Route two-twenty and Route thirty-two overlaid. You can see how that developed in the seventies, very much like it is today. So you have this resource where DeBarrs identifies churches, farms, mills, all of those things. And after two years of work, that some of you are familiar with, it's true. It's there. It's in front yards, it's in backyards, it's in the forest that's now grown back over. It's within a foot of the surface. It's here on a Tuesday, bulldozed on a Wednesday. It's extraordinarily fragile in terms of its being survivable. It, it doesn't have a very, uh... The context is just the plaza, just the loam. So when somebody comes along and builds a house or driveway or, or whatever they might want to be doing, septic system, they're destroying it. And there's nothing that can be done. You know, there's no regulations or policy or anything like that at the state or local levels for private land. If it's on your land, it's yours. And when I work on private land, that's the understanding. So when I get done, it belongs to the landowner, whatever it is. Knives, forks, spoons, you know, beads or buckles or buttons. It all belongs to the landowner. So this is going to have to be eventually using DeBarrs map as just one level of insight into what's around, recognizing that there was at least thirty years before that map of Broad Bay and Leverett. And there's a couple hundreds since that map, right? So we're not even talking about the eighteen hundreds yet. Shipyards, mills, all of those things that are more relevant to many of us than the Revolutionary War period. That's all out there too. So if DeBarrs has about a hundred and eighty to two hundred structures, you can probably double that for the ones that were there before and certainly for the ones that were there after. So Walderboro, just in a very broad brush kind of way, has something like three to four hundred archaeological sites from the head of Todd down. I've never heard of such a thing.
I know the house that I live in was there before eighteen twenty-eight.
Abden's house was there before eighteen twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. The corners, when we remodeled the inside, the, the corners of the house were made of hemlocks and they were hued out on the inside and the bark was still on the tree.
The corners of the house were hued out from hemlock.
Yeah.
And the bark was still on the tree.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we are living in it and we may not even know it. It's extraordinary. So when you look at Route two-twenty on the schematic, all of the houses in seventeen seventy are still there. They're right along the edge of the road.
Yeah.
Then you see that some of them are way down by the river. That's the Slago District, seventeen forties, fifties. I worked for five and a half months this summer trying to find one of the structures on the DeBarrs map and I actually found four on exactly the same location, beginning about seventeen hundred to about eighteen thirty. Same place, four different occupations. Fortunately for me, they weren't layered. They were separated horizontally, so I could see the difference. But if that's going to happen every time, you have hundreds and hundreds of sites.
Has the Historical Society been involved with you on this at all?
Has the Historical Society been involved on this?
Yes. But I, I kept it kind of under the, on the QT, as it were, because I, I don't want a lot of people going out saying, oh yeah, let's dig this up, dig that up. Bill and I have, have worked together this summer off and on and into the fall on a couple of, a couple of different sites. And so the Historical Society is aware and Jean and I know each other from way back. I served as a United Methodist pastor for about a decade. And so Jean and I know each other through the church from twenty-five, thirty years ago. But in this case, Bill and I and, and Jean are in a kind of a conversation. But ultimately, what I kind of envision is not led by the Historical Society or led by the municipality, but rather a cooperative table at which there's a partnership, not a hierarchy. Because I think ultimately, the conversation has to be understood in those terms. That, that it's not about telling landowners what they do or can't do. It's not about top-down. It has to be kind of all at the same level. Otherwise, it won't work. Everybody has baggage, right? Whether, as good as the Historical Society is, I'm sure there's people that have issues, you know? No, they don't want the Historical Society telling them what to do. You don't know what I'm talking about, do you? Right? And, and every municipality, right? I mean, I'm sure every single one of your meetings goes smoothly. It's just a given, right? Okay.
Every time.
You know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? So when you have a table where everybody understands they're just partners, that there's no boss, as it were, it might make the conversation a little longer, might take a little farther to get to consensus or some kind of vision of where we're going. But when we get there, everybody's on board. And that's more important. So I may not live long enough to see it and I'm, I'm not trying to paraphrase any particular leader in the, in the country, but literally at almost seventy, I don't expect to see this in my lifetime as a fully fledged relationship to archaeology. But I can see it, if you know what I mean. I could see universities, colleges, from out of state, from in-state, master students coming to Walderboro and saying, oh, do you have anything on the, oh, let's see, seventeen seventies? Oh yeah, we have five of those. Which would you like? Talk to this person or that person? It's just, it's unbelievable. It really is unbelievable what you have. If you can imagine a Williamsburg with a river in the middle. There you go. When you look at that, and that's the only, it's a draft, so just, I just assume you keep it to yourselves, but when you look at that, look at Dutchneck. Very few people beyond Dutchneck to the west, interior. Dutchneck, exactly like it is today. Road right down the middle, houses on either side. Fields all the way to the water. Hasn't changed in three hundred years. It's amazing. Any other questions? I don't want to take your whole night.
Well, we, do we, can we have a copy of this?
Bob has a copy.
I have a copy. I'll send it out.
And you're welcome to share that among yourselves, but it's not necessarily a public draft for anybody.
Right.
But it's an, it's an awareness for you.
Yep.
And then Jan has a copy as well.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Great.
Are there any questions from the audience, from the?
Asking questions from the audience?
I want a raise.
He's causing trouble?
He wants a raise.
He's causing trouble.
He wants a raise.
He wants a raise.
Well, I'm sorry, sir. Let me see what I got. Yeah. For the kind of work you're doing, you're lucky to get paid at all. Other questions of relevance?
I want to tell you, it was, it's been a learning experience working with Haber this summer into the fall. Haber's a very knowledgeable man.
Whatever he's saying, don't believe it. I can tell.
It's remarkable what-
Harper is a very remarkable, knowledgeable man.
A very remarkable what?
Knowledgeable, knowledgeable man.
We don't believe it. I just know what you don't.
But I don't know if, uh, one of the landowners that's in the room shared with the rest of the slotmen. I don't know if, have you shared with your-
No, I really, I really haven't told. And I don't mind. If you have no objection, I could tell a little bit about my experience.
Do.
All right, take me two minutes. Bill and Harper visited us back in-
January.
January, my God, was it that long ago?
Um, yeah, pretty close.
And Harper was doing some work upriver. And he said, he'd heard, uh, Bill had told him that I'd found a brick. I'd been digging for a tree to plant and found an old brick.
Ten years ago.
Yeah, well, it was a while ago. Yeah. And they had this conversation and Harper looked at the map and thought, well, you know, there might be something there. So he came over and he dug down first near the shore. And he found an old site that had been dug but abandoned because there were too many big boulders in the hole. They didn't want to waste the time digging a foundation in that area. Then he thought maybe they moved up the hill a bit. So we dug around halfway up the lot, nothing. So we went to where, he asked me where I found the brick. So I told him and we went back there and by goodness, he found an old root cellar that had been dug and filled in. We think maybe by the debris left over from the house that was built next door to ours back in the eighteen fifties. He found a hearth. He found shards of creamware and Sheffield ceramics. And then he dug further down near where our woodshed is. It's just beyond where he dug the second time. And there was another hearth there. Someone had built before the seventeen sixties in that area. They'd built something. So it was, it was just a fascinating little journey to, to see all that come out of the ground.
It, it's literally within about, what, a hundred and fifty feet of the road?
Yes.
It's in a back, it's in your backyard.
The, the first one, the second one, third place he dug was a hundred and fifty feet from the road.
Yeah. It, it quite literally is, I mean, you want to put, put a garage in, you can pop material up from the ground that's three hundred years old or older. I mean, I'm not even talking Native American, but just historic Revolutionary War, seventeen hundred, seven, doesn't get any older than that here for Euro-American. And it quite literally is being lost every day. If you look at the lots as they're being subdivided along the river, they were long skinny lots in their day for lots of really practical reasons. You need a hundred acres and that's self-sustaining. But when you have children, then you divide that in half and fifty acres is still self-sustaining. And then eventually, because it went about a mile back, most of these lots, way beyond Route two twenty or Route thirty-two. As they get more and more divided, people move closer and closer to what is now Route two twenty. The issue is that before any of that happened, the river was the highway. And so they weren't up by Route two twenty. So some of the earlier sites are down closer to the river on the first level ground, not on the slope. And so when you get to someplace like Bob's house, Bob and Sally are well up the slope on level ground by two twenty. But the site he's referring to, the earlier site, I believe it's earlier, is right at the break in slope. So someone had come up from the shore, up the steep slope, put in a small cellar and built a small house, fourteen by eighteen, fourteen by twenty, two rooms, that's it. Not there anymore. Now it's Bob and Sally's. And someday, Bob and Sally's will be gone and somebody else will be there. And, but we're losing them at a really rapid pace. Every time one of the lots from the Route, Route two twenty or thirty-two gets subdivided, it's usually the lower half. And then a house and septic and driveway and power lines, often underground, are run all the way down. And we have the habit now in modern times of destroying acres when we build a, a single-family home. Back then, it wouldn't even impact this room. So when we think about our impact footprint, we have the potential to destroy it all in no time. But we have it today. And that's, that's kind of what I want to bring to you. So I continue to do my work. It gets a little tougher. Bill will attest to that. Knees, hips, back, you know, all new. But it gets tougher every year. But I'll continue to do my work in order to validate the De Beers map and to continue to, to, to bring an awareness to individual landowners one at a time. But the table, I really need that to start kind of in, in my lifetime. You might consider as a board, and I know the town manager's not here tonight, right? But you might consider a liaison that might work with me in terms of having a starter conversation. I don't know who that might be, Bob, but... But somebody who has a vested interest is always a, someone who's going to bring a different perspective than someone who has no interest at all. So that might be a good starting place. If you're okay with that.
I'm cool.
Okay. I like you.
Yep.
We get along okay.
Yep.
All right. Any more questions? Will, you're awfully quiet. I'm not the teacher, I just, Will, you're being very quiet tonight.
I'm very interested in it.
Just absorbing.
I watched your presentation for the Historical Society and was interested to see what he finds.
He, he watched your presentation in the Historical Society, he's interested.
You were there, yes.
I, I watched it on Facebook.
On Facebook?
Facebook. Oh, it was on Facebook. Oh, that's right, you took a picture, yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes. So you, you've heard this?
Yeah.
Kind of, yeah. All right. I have a couple of my business cards if you'd like. In case you have something that you want to bring to my attention or even just inquire, a question, anything like that, just let me know. No point in giving me a phone call. Doesn't work, sorry. But email or text, one or the other.
He, he does respond to both.
I try and get back to folk pretty quickly.
Yeah, you do. Yep.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I know time is precious and especially tonight, everybody here has voted, I hope.
Yep.
I see. Good, good. In your own town, I voted in mine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, and we can talk?
Yes.
Okay, great. And Bill?
Yep.
Don't wait for the check.
Okay. What have you say, boss?
You have my card? Okay. Good to see you, thank you, Peg.
Bye-bye, nice to meet you.
Okay, continuing on, public hearings, I don't know of any tonight, none? Adjustments to the agenda, are there any adjustments that need to be made to the agenda tonight? Hearing, none?
Oh, there is.
Yeah, me, I sent you the email about Marcus and I.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah. Go ahead, Marcus.
Just go now?
Yeah.
Next week? Next week? Okay, see you later.
Yeah, do you want us to just stand up? Hello, everyone. So, um, so last, so last week, Marcus and I spoke with Doug Beck from the Department of Agriculture Conservation in Orr Street to talk about the tennis courts over at Eighty Gray. For those who are not aware, there's a special covenant on it so that it has to remain as a public preparation area because of funds that the town received back in nineteen seventy-three. We can either try and address those courts or we can find a new location and then have the covenants, covenants set on that location. We spoke with Doug on Friday and visited the Little League field, which-
John Foster Little League Field?
Yeah, if you want to take over on that part.
Yeah, just, we haven't talked about it yet. So I, I had one meeting with Madomic Valley Little League. Madomic Valley Little League owns John Foster Little League Field, which is the field across from Miller School. Since the pandemic, Madomic Valley Little League, it's the Walderboro Friendship portion that owns it. They have, uh, they've not been doing the best. They've been struggling with, with some money and some numbers. And so they brought it, we kind of talked, I'm their treasurer, so I'm well aware of what's going on there. And so we talked about maybe turning that field over to the town if they would have it. They would still be able to use it, just like they use Sukforth Field and all our other fields. But it would be put more on the town to maintain it and take care of it because Little League's struggling to do it. It's, in the past, I, I mean, we have Billy here, he was Little League president for a long time. Back, back when I played Little League, they had ten, ten Little League teams that all used that field. So, you know, field days, getting parents together, they had, you know, a hundred parents to choose from, like they had a big group. Since we've built Sukforth Field, baseball has completely moved over to Sukforth, so only softball uses Foster now. And the numbers have gone from ten teams to three, and two of those are baseballs. So we really have gone from ten teams using that field to one. As far as like the nine to twelve-year-olds, the, the lower levels, there's a bunch of teams that use it. But it's really the nine to twelve-year-old groups that brings in the volunteers to help. So they're, they're having a really hard time maintaining that field. And so that was kind of brought in that maybe the town would be interested in taking it over. And then talking with Max, it might be a good substitute for the tennis courts to relieve our obligation there.
Is there enough room for it?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they'd have to do yellow book appraisals on each property to make sure that the field is equal, equal or greater value than the tennis courts, but the field is much bigger than the tennis courts and, and it's in a lot better shape right now. But I don't, it had, it comes, it's not just, there, there's like financial value and then there's recreational value. And so like tennis courts have a higher recreational value than a ball field because, well, not always, but more. Like it, it depends on how many people can use it and for what different things. So like, but I guess tennis is just tennis and baseball's just baseball, even though we use it for other things. But like, you know, something that was more multi-use would be valued higher for them. But it can't be previously owned by the town. Like the town, like it can't be, we can't take our tennis court obligation and put it at the rec fields because we already own, we already, we already own it and it's, it wouldn't be adding recreation. In their eyes, it would be losing it because they'd be losing the tennis courts and not gaining it. But where this is, Foster Field is privately owned, becoming publicly owned and open for recreation for everybody.
That actually expands bigger than just the, just the tennis courts.
It should work for them, right? Because, oh, go ahead.
Because I'm, I'm sure that they're going to cost a lot more to replace.
The tennis courts?
The tennis courts.
Well, yes, I see.
And do we, can we get grants to help alleviate some of that?
So that's, we can, and that's the second option. Part of the reason we want to do this is that because those tennis courts are past their service date and they're predominantly unusable, we, we have a bad standing with the LWCF. Like we have a bad grade because we haven't kept up our end of the bargain with those, that grant and those courts. If we get something, if we get back on their good graces, we can get back in on the grant opportunities they have, which are huge.
So there are two options for addressing it. One would be if the town is going to, if the town does, is interested in getting the Little League fields and taking it under our ownership, then we would just have to make sure we note in public documents that it's going to be addressed as the way of having this covenant and it's going to always be public recreation area, which I don't think anyone's going to have a problem with the, the Little League field across from the school being always used for recreation. The process will take about, I think you said two years?
You said it could take up to two years for the transfer of the obligation from the tennis courts to be moved to the ball fields? And so I asked, you know, if, say, say you guys are on board, Little League's on board and the June ballot passes and we obtain Foster Field next summer, does then it become, well, we already own it, so now it doesn't qualify? And he said, no, you just have to make sure all the, all the paperwork we put out says we're buying this or we're obtaining this to, to take over this obligation. And then we'd be covered even though it might be another year and a half after that before our obligation is actually transferred from the tennis courts.
It would fall more into administrative stuff for myself and then the, the National Park Services because they're the ones handling the whole thing. So that is option one. And as Marcus noted, that would require getting a yellow book appraisal and then if there's a difference, we'd have to make up that difference. The other option, and I'll pass this around, is that Doug Beck suggested perhaps doing a land water conservation grant to expand what we have to the rest of the recreational areas in the Eighty Gray, Philbrook Ballfield area. So right now, the tennis courts are the only thing we actually have for the Land Water Conservation Fund. All the other public fields don't have that type of covenant. So what we could do is apply for a grant to either move the tennis courts or have some improved recreation on the, what I call Eighty Gray Field, that undeveloped block between the ball field and Eighty Gray. And that red square that you see there is roughly the size of what the tennis courts are. So I think what Marcus and I had talked about was move, if the town wants to keep the tennis courts and pick up, or make them pickleball courts, shift them over to where the tree line is, and there is enough space to do that. And then the grant can also be used for making improvements to Philbrook Ballfield as well, addressing that drainage issue that's between the ball field and the undeveloped area. And we talked, or you talked with Volunteers of America about what they were thinking about with the parking lot. I don't know if they were implying they'd pay for the parking or they're expecting us to do the parking, but if they're open to doing the parking lot on the, the field, then that could be part of the match to go for the whole grant. Was there any other items we were thinking about for that?
No, that's just kind of the options. The way Doug put it is that yellow book appraisals aren't always the cheapest route. The benefit to Foster Field is that we don't have to build anything once we obtain it, like it's already a recreational facility. So if we obtain it, it's pretty much good to go. There's only a couple of small things we would have to do. Where if we transfer it at, I don't, do we have to do yellow book appraisals if we transfer the tennis courts from like one portion of the property to another?
If, so if we go with this second, yeah, if we go with this second option where we're expanding, we're not doing a yellow book appraisal, we-
So that would save us money there, but then we would have to put the upgrade, like, we would have to come up with a match to the bigger grant to fix up the whole property and-
We would need a match and probably someone to do like a, a, an actual design for it to actually show that-
Virginia design?
Right, so that we're not crazy and thinking the tennis courts would fit where they fit and parking and the, addressing the stormwater drainage and all that. And for the second option, it just has to be clear that if we go with that grant, that means all of that area you see in the, the white boundaries would then have this covenant restriction. So if, if ten years down the line, we say, well, let's put something right next to the Eighty Gray School where, and sell it off for a high price, then we wouldn't be able to do that because unless we found about eight acres worth of recreational area, that would then-
We'd be, we'd be in the same situation.
We'd be in the same spot, but for eight acres, or seven acres instead of-
The LWCF grants are fantastic. They, they with, like, like there's some of the bigger grants you can get through recreation, but they require-
It's a commitment.
Upkeep, upkeep of the facility to get open to the public forever. So it does, it does get, like, it's a, it's a forever commitment. But, which, which is good to keep recreation open in town, but it also puts us in situations like we're in with the tennis courts where stuff outlives its life and we're obligated to fix it.
So I guess the question for the select board is, is there a preferred route you would like us to take? Or would you like us to try and stay a bit in the middle as long as we can?
I, just a question. When you're talking about taking over Foster Field, are you saying adding tennis courts to that area?
No, no, Foster Field would remain as is.
As is?
The town, the town, it would, it would take over our tennis court obligation. Those tennis courts need to remain, the, the wording is they need to remain open public recreation. They don't have to remain tennis courts. And so if we move it to a different, if we move it over to the ball fields for the, the John Foster Field, we could just-
And, and so there would be no tennis courts?
Right, yeah. I, I mean, I have, I would still like to build tennis courts in town as part of, as the Recreation Director. I have people asking me for pickleball courts all the time, so I still think it's in our interest to look into it in the future. But this would alleviate our obligation at a shorter term.
Okay. All right, okay, I misunderstood that, I think.
Well, and then that gets back in, and then another option for the first option is once, if, once we do get the courts, we can then do a land water conservation grant as well for that to then improve- to then improve and make an expansion and have the courts moved over there if we'd like. And for the second option, I just have the red square for the tennis courts, but they don't have to be tennis courts, they could be anything that still satisfies recreational needs and infrastructure, which could be pickleball and tennis courts, or it could be anything else if there's an actual demand for that type of thing.
Yeah, I'd rather transfer the obligation we have now behind eighty gray to another area. I'd rather transfer it to the Foster Field. And then it gives us the flexibility to do anything we wanna do as long as it's recreational.
Yeah.
Right?
What, you mean with eighty gray or Foster?
I, I'm talking about Foster. I, I wouldn't wanna interfere with that lot between the baseball field and the, the school. Because we talked about other things for that lot, public garden or
Yeah, as far as Little League's, like, I don't think Little League would sign us over the field unless it was absolutely a hundred percent gonna remain a baseball field forever. Like they, they, we need that field for Little League. So like, I, they, they wanna get rid of it, but they need it, so
Okay, so could you make it multiple, multiple use? Does it have to be just softball?
So, yeah, they, it gets, it gets used for kindergarten through sixth grade. The high school team comes down and uses it from time to time, I use it for adult stuff. At the end of the day, it's a ball field, like, and it's not a huge ball field, so I can't put like soccer on it or anything, but it, 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 it serves a purpose and it's, as, as, as far as Little League fields go, it is probably one of the top fields in the state, especially with its drainage. I've driven by there at three thirty in the afternoon and it had a skim coat of water on it, because it's been pouring rain and by five o'clock it's playable. Um, our brand new fields, which are also some of the best in the state, as far as drainage, if it rained that hard, I wouldn't be able to use them for a week, cause it, it just doesn't drain. But something about that Foster Field, the way they built it, it has amazing drainage. And so it really saves us in the springtime, if Foster Field, or if Sukforth's unplayable because of the rain, I can send people down to Foster, cause that field is always playable.
And that'd be under the town's control, so you could do that.
And it would be under the town's control, it would take, you know, there, there's some projects that need to be done there. The, you know, that Little League has fallen behind on, you know, the, the dugouts need some new shingling, the concession needs a new roof, and the, uh, the backstop needs to be replaced, those are the three main projects, but um, and Julie wanted me to ask you guys about this a little bit too, but in the, in the year to year, I did some quick numbers. It would probably add about, on a regular year, no major projects, it would probably add about twenty-five hundred dollars to my budget. And so if it is something we wanna move forward with, do you guys want me to do two budgets for this next year? One with Foster Field, one without, um, and just, I would, just, just to
Cause this'll have to go to the voters.
Yeah, yeah, it all will. And so, but she wanted me to mention that.
So, just so I understand.
Yeah.
If, if we take over Foster Field, that will, um, take care of our obligation.
Correct.
The tennis courts, but it will not give us a place for tennis courts?
It, it, it wouldn't require us, it wouldn't require us to rebuild tennis courts.
Right, but so we don't, so that doesn't give us tennis courts?
No.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so we don't have to build the tennis courts there?
We don't have to build them there, no, they don't have to be built anywhere. But we don't, even if we, even if we don't obtain Foster Field and we say we're gonna take, we're not gonna rebuild tennis courts, but we're gonna put some type of other recreation on this middle field and expand it to the whole lot, they don't, it doesn't have to be tennis courts.
Okay, I got you.
Um.
Be a playground.
It could, yeah, it could be a playground, could be any, any type of public recreation that wasn't previously there or planned upon.
I get it now, I, I was kinda, I, that's what I thought, that it was gonna be building the tennis courts there.
Yeah.
Right.
The plan I've, until this Foster thing has come up, the plan I have had was to wait, you know, I've been waiting for five years on what's gonna happen with eighty gray building, because I didn't wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars on new tennis courts to have the property sold a year later, you know? And so I've been planning, like, outside, outside of, you know, the Foster Field thing, if we were gonna keep it at eighty gray, or even put tennis courts somewhere, I think tennis court, tennis pickleball courts are a good idea at some point. And if, you know, if, if leaving stuff up at eighty gray and using a larger LWCF grant to build those is the way to go, maybe that's the way we go, or we just do the Foster Field and then apply for grants later to do that, but
That's kind of what I would think you'd wanna do is, cause you got parking there, I mean, it's not super parking, but you get head parking.
Yeah.
Cause you're gonna need to, and turn it into something that's gonna be useful, not necessarily tennis courts, but the pickleball. I don't know how much room you need for a pickleball.
It's, it's the same, like, I, I was talking to Max about this, like, if we built pickleball, just pickleball courts, they'd be a little bit smaller than a tennis court.
So if you built a tennis court, you could still
You could still put pickleball on it and then you're pleasing two groups of people, there's
So that could be some, some sort of a recreational complex.
You know, pickleball's everywhere, but there are still tennis players out there, it's not as dead as people make it seem. I have people asking me about tennis courts all the time.
It's easy to put a couple pickleball courts on one tennis court.
Yeah, you can, you can technically put two pickleball courts on a tennis court.
That, that's done
With a little bit extra.
In a lot of areas.
Yeah, and so I, like I said, I think, I think we should work, really work towards pickleball tennis courts. But if, you know, there's two different ways you can do it, we can, we can do it all at eighty gray, or we can do Foster for now and then work towards that later with another bigger project. Cause no matter what happens, if we move it to Foster or we keep it at eighty gray, if Volunteers of America takes the building, we still own seven acres up there, we still should do something up there. That, you know, that property's been in limbo so long.
Yeah.
You know, I, I wrote down five things off the top of my head today that I could do up there that would really improve the property for recreation as a whole. You know, the, the backstop is a danger, the, the outfield fence needs to be replaced. Tennis courts, parking, um, the bleachers, the metal bleachers up there should have a backing on them. Um, and so that was, those are just five quick things that a grant could help us fill in, so. Like I said, there's a couple of different ways to go about it, we were just kinda
Just seeing if the select board had a, wanted to lean one way or another on it.
Yeah.
I'd like to see some numbers. I'd like to see what the costs pencil out to be, without holding you guys to it, but at least
Yep.
It's some indication of what we're looking at, in both cases.
Okay, yeah, I got the, the numbers for, I got some rough numbers for Foster Field, but as far as like building tennis courts, I'm not sure. I think, I think I, if I'm remembering right, I did a rough, I got a, I got a estimate when I first got hired, which was like five years ago, six years ago now, and it was right around a hundred thousand dollars then.
And that's without lights or with lights?
Uh, I think it was to rebuild them, like tear down
So you wouldn't play, you wouldn't play at night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't know, there were, there were lights at eighty gray in the parking lot anyways, so I, I didn't, I hadn't mentioned lights. That was just, that was just the, the court fence and that.
We can get, uh, yellow book appraisals and some, probably get some ideas for, uh, the landscape architect that would plan out the whole area as well. Thanks, you got our hand up.
I just had a question, thinking about Sylvania. Um, so that the town owns the Sylvania property, would that remove any obligation? Or if you decided to do something recreationally?
So just as we were getting Sylvania, I made sure that we did have public documents. Um, when we made the offer to Ozram, that we would potentially use the, the area to address the land water conservation. So depending on the results from tonight and what people want, the Sylvania community to do.
Could be another option.
That could be another option. So in terms of the tennis courts, that could be a case where it's just, if we get the town saying we want it to be a recreational area, that can be where tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts, electric go-kart idea Julie keeps talking about, they can all go in Sylvania if we want to, then that would address the grant.
Okay, thanks.
And if that happened, then the Foster Field would what, be put up for sale?
Well, no, I think They would, they would keep, they're gonna keep it.
I thought you told me they were economically iffy.
Yeah, they're
So how can they keep it if they can't sustain it?
They, they would, they would keep it, they would, they're not that, like, they're not to the point where they need to sell it. They would, they're, it's, they're struggling to keep up with it the way it needs to be, and they would like to get rid of it.
Okay.
Um, they, they would be, it's getting, it might get to that point where they would have to sell it or something, but it, it's not there yet. But it's, it's been trending downward, you know? It's harder to get people to volunteer and donate, you know, all, you know, Little League, Little League had a hundred and thirty something players this year at thirty-five dollars apiece to play, you know, that's four grand. And it's just not going, it's, and then the donations haven't been coming in like they used to. We, they haven't been doing fundraisers or concessions since, and so they need to get back on it, but the, the board is, is dwindling. It's, and, and we, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think it's something we could help them out with, but that's up to you guys.
Yeah, and the property, whether we, the town wants to get Foster Field as well, that's probably gonna be a, a longer conversation some other time, cause tonight was gonna be more focused on just the grants and whether you want us to work towards that acquisition focus, or if you wanted us to maybe pursue the bigger eighty gray focus.
I need to, I need to see some numbers, yep.
I'd like to see the numbers, and I don't know, I don't really know what the yellow book stuff is or what that would cost or
Yeah, that's what we'll have to put together.
And by, by then, you might know more about Sylvania.
Yeah, yeah.
So then we've got three to look at, not two.
Yeah, two, yep.
It'd be nice to have a complex, I think, uh, pickleball is very popular, and tennis is popular. If we had nice courts, I, I moved here, those courts were brand new, and they were used a lot.
Yeah.
We'd go up, we'd walk up and, and play tennis. Um, it would be nice if it were in a location that was visible too. You know, and it, with enough courts, so that there could be enough people playing both tennis and pickleball at the same time.
That was, that was one of the two reasons why the, if we're going with the eighty gray idea, um, to move the tennis courts to the middle field, because
That's where people park anyways.
That's where, yeah, that's where
It's not down in behind the building, it's down in where the fields are, people know stuff is anyways.
And I think there's just gonna be misconception, once the eighty gray project actually goes forward, that people are gonna think that's a, that, that area's only for Volunteers of America residents, when really they're meant to be public.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
So is, Foster Field's not big enough for a ball field and tennis courts, is it?
No, not currently, no.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the, yeah, the boundary of, the, the property boundary doesn't go much past the, the fence all the way around it.
Okay, doesn't go back far?
No, no, only like seven.
Where the kids play?
Nope, that's all owned by somebody else, you know, we mow it, like the, the Little League mows it. Um, but it would be, yeah, seven, I think it's only like seven, eight feet behind the concession stand is the property line.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's
I was surprised by that too.
Yeah, alright.
I thought, I thought they owned it all the way back in the woods and
Used to play in behind it.
I know, the kids, the kids think, kids think so.
Alright, well, we'll get some numbers put together.
Cool.
Thank you. Okay, any other citizen comments? Alright, we'll move on to select board comments. Mr. Butler, do you have any?
I, I would just add to what Harbor said. Um, to comment on his degree of professionalism. I mean, he, he and Bill worked amazingly well together and very hard. And he just, he takes out a square of, how he locates where to start digging is beyond me. But the guy, almost every single time, is spot on. He knows where, he knows where to start, and nine times out of ten, he'll hit something, he'll pull something out of the ground that says we gotta concentrate on this area. And I just, I just feel that if there were enough interest among people in town, it doesn't have to be a whole big group of people, but some people who have an interest in the historical heritage that their property represents, it would, it would start something. And could be, well, it would be of value to the property owners, of course. But, you know, he writes up a little report after, every single time he's, he does the dig, he does a thirty or forty page report. Then leaves what he found, dates it. Yeah, photographs, the whole, the whole nine yards, he's very, very professional about it.
That addition bill?
Yeah.
So I just, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Abby?
I got, that's it.
Jan?
Well, I thought he was very interesting, and I can understand why people, he, he kind of grabs you and, um, and makes it exciting. I think that's a, a nice thing, and I was listening to him and thinking, ah, our focus could be on the history of Waldeboro. Then I listened to, um, Max and Marcus, and I thought, oh, the focus could be on recreation for Waldeboro. But I, I think at some point, maybe we, we should have a focus or two to really, really work on. I found him, I thought he was fascinating, um, he, he certainly knows how to work a crowd. Uh, and to know how to speak to get, um, you know, get people to listen, I thought, I thought he was excellent, I liked that. And history, of course, we are, since this is our two-hundred-and-fiftieth year, um, we are doing a lot. And I just wanted to show my coin, and everyone in the audience and the TV audience can get one of these, there are a number of places to get them, Bill Maxwell, John Budgeet, the library, um, the real estate, town office, right where we are, yes, lots of places. They're nice, they'd be great for, uh, little Christmas gifts, put in stockings instead of chocolate coins. Anyway, I think this was an exciting meeting today, I was really happy to listen to, uh, both of our presenters today. That's all I have to say.
I don't have anything.
Okay, I don't have anything, so we'll move on to the town manager's report. Oh, the town manager isn't here, does anybody else have anything on behalf of the town manager? Now we'll move on then to the consent calendar, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, consent calendar, is there any discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Under new business, we're going to, uh, vote on the, let's see, let me get my glasses on here, the mechanic truck driver position as a, as a select board. Have you all seen the document on the truck driver?
Yeah, is what we've looked at in final form?
I, I, I was gonna say, I thought it was, I didn't know if it was draft. I couldn't remember if it said draft on it or not when I got the email.
Yeah, I didn't see a final version of it. Will, do you know?
I haven't seen the final version of it.
Okay, still here?
I, I've only seen the first draft and I guess, do we get one in the email?
This is what they gave me this afternoon. Just pass that around a little quick, it doesn't have draft on it.
Maybe we should table this until the next meeting?
We should, dude, I haven't even seen it yet, so, I don't know if John's seen it.
Let's table it. I know John had some comments to make on it, but if you haven't seen it
Yeah.
I, it doesn't make sense to vote on it, I would second the motion to table it.
Yeah.
Is it a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, motion carried.
Yeah, cause I thought the one I got in the email is a draft.
Okay, anything for old business?
She asked for.
Anything on old business, anything else for new business, I'm gonna say that for her, anything else for new business? Okay, we'll move to old business, any, uh, old business anybody wants to bring up? Anything we need to adj, uh, add to the agenda items for our next meeting, which is on the twenty-second?
Yeah, we need to complete our performance evaluation of, we need to complete that.
This, uh, this draft, uh, drop description.
Okay.
And I believe we have potential, um, abatements Daryl talked about.
Yeah.
As the board of assessors, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
We're selecting a date on that, a little later date to get together to hear those?
I think you'll be here on the twenty-second.
Right, but I don't
Just move it on the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Okay. Alright.
Yep.
Alright, anything else for the, for the cause? If not, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned. Now we can go warm up.
It's cold in here.
Oh, I've got signatures for you, please, yeah, don't get away, I'll get hung anywhere.
So Bill, how much did you fill him in on our history?
That one on the, uh,
How much did you fill him in on our history?
On the position.
See, all I have a knowledge, I took what I said here.
Okay.
One of my great, great, great grandfathers was a first white man born in That's what your mother always, that's what your mother always told you.
She always
Oh, yeah. Well, most meetings over Motion, meeting's over.
Taught me a lot too. He got up in that, what started was that Lincolnville dig. And he was researching Olmas.
Yep.
And he found out Olmo had a piece of land in Waldabro. And then he wanted to work that area and that, that one's a public one. Already did that, that was down around the Robins. Down in Sylvania, the Robins, that's where the store, uh, graveyard is. And we know it's gonna be related to Freddie, I think.